Good afternoon. Call to order the regular scheduled December 1st meeting of the Planning Commission. First thing we'll do is we'll establish that we don't have a quorum. There has been some illness in a couple of members of the commission or other things that they sent me emails or called either late yesterday or today that they could not make it. We just have two cases that are on the agenda today and we had advertised those. Where we are with those cases is prior to preliminary approval. What the commission has to do is publish in the local newspaper at least 14 days prior to any scheduled vote on the preliminary approval. We have done that. Those advertisements were supposed to be in the paper Tuesday so that our meeting on the 15th, both of these projects would be eligible for a vote on preliminary approval. It'll be up to the full commission members that are present whether or not they -- because they don't have to do it on that day, but we will have met all the legal requirements to do it on that day. And it will be up to the members that are here two weeks from now whether they will actually vote on the preliminary approval that would be eligible for both of these We have had pre-application meeting with the first case number 0508, Edwards Communities and the Edge Group at our last meeting. And we would just invite them to make any other presentation that they would wish to make at this time. And we'll record it into the record and be available for some public participation. I'll start off?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name's Rick Kirk. I'm with the Edwards Companies in Columbus. And with me to assist again is Ryan Pearson from the Edge Group, our consultant and land planner. We did introduce ourselves a few weeks ago and discuss the project. And we're here with some responses to some questions that came up at our first meeting and also to listen to any other comments that you folks may have. In front of me is a perspective along Stimson Avenue of what the project will look like and how it will fit in with the buildings. We think this is a good illustration of -- and the best kind of illustration for all of us to look at in terms of how a project works with the neighborhood. And we're very pleased with the perspective along Stimson. What you can see here on the top photo is actually an existing shot of Stimson. And on the left side of the board is a rendering of how our buildings will look. We've talked about our tower element along the corner there on Stimson and how we would like to begin the improvement of the Stimson corridor in terms of improvements, meaning street lights and streetscape that we think will add to the Stimson corridor, which you folks at the city had mentioned to us, your need for Stimson corridor improvement. So we have hardscaping, we have bollards, we have lighting. And this is one of our early attempts here to indicate how we think this will be a very handsome addition. I might start with some of our basic principles here. We have reviewed the Athens Comprehensive Plan, which we believe is a draft plan. We, in our review of it, understand that the City of Athens has acknowledged that there's a need for -- that the existing environment for students is in single-family rentals and that, from a Brailsford and Dunleavy study that was done for the university, that a large percentage of campus students are living in single-family houses, which we understand is not the long-term goal of the city. So with our proposed project here, we would hopefully take some of that demand upon the single-family houses and place that and manage it in our community. We hope that this project will offer to the community the ability to revitalize what we think is a neglected site, certainly a vacant site now. And as I mentioned our last meeting, it has some environmental issues which we will address and manage and clean up. And that's always a good thing. We think that our project will minimize the need for the automobile, although we're meeting -- very closely we're meeting the local requirements for parking. The layout of the site, we think, promotes pedestrian use to the campus and to the other facilities that are commonly used here as part of your town along Court Street. We think that to provide the kind of housing environment that we propose here, as we have done in other universities, we think this will be the best student housing opportunity for the community, which provides positive opportunities for students and in terms of their view of their college experience. And it's important to have a clean and safe and well-managed operation so that you can focus on your college activities as opposed to other problems that come with housing. So that's my general outlook. Last meeting, one of the issues that came up and I wanted to address more specifically is how we manage our properties and how we manage and how we design safety and security. In our projects, to be specific, we have -- in each unit, we have a monitored panic alarm. These alarms are there. It's a red button that's in the living areas and in all of the bedrooms. We privately monitor that and based upon the protocol that we have on a particular property, if there is an alarm, a horn sounds, different strokes. But most importantly, if the alarm is monitored by our security company and then if it's during the day, the property manager is notified or a host of other folks in the line of protocol. At night, we have folks that are on duty that respond to these kinds of calls. I might also manage, on the more mundane side, that the false alarms have been minimized in the first few weeks that young people move in. There are a few accidents, but because we put a pretty stiff fine on false alarms, which is $500 a pop, we find that it has been a good source to manage the false alarms for us. We also have a fire suppression system throughout the buildings and in each of the units. And these systems are also monitored, so if there's any fluctuation, any possibility of a fire, we're immediately notified. On all of our properties that we have and on this one included, we employ and have police officers that live in our properties. This has been a good policy for us in the several thousand units that we have owned and managed. And we feel that those local police officers, part of what we enter into is called a courtesy manager contract, and they have responsibilities to walk the property and to address several of the items that we feel are part of a secure and safe environment. One of them, for example, might be after-hours escort service. If a student is at a campus location and feels in need that they want to have an escort back to the property after hours or after dark, our community manager will -- courtesy manager will assist with that. Also goes into monitoring the parking areas and our public facilities. We find that oftentimes, some of the problems that occur have to do with vandalism of vehicles. We have a proactive type of process where we, not only do we monitor the cars that are on-site, but we also meet with students and tell them how they can best avoid having their cars broken into. So that kind of policy helps to minimize incidences, tell them when and where that they need to have an escort. Also, in our lease agreement with each of our students, we have included and we would, in this case, do the same, the university code of conduct so that we are acting in unison with the policies of the local university. We have also worked with the university so that when there is a violation of those codes of conduct, that they then go through the university legal system. This seems to be something that is, even though we are a private entity, it seems to be something that is very effective in having responsibility in terms of our residents. We are in the process, in one of our existing properties, of having that code of conduct follow the student off-campus. An example would be if someone were to go up, I'll make this up, and go up to an Ohio State football game, happens to get caught in some activities that are not part of the student code of conduct, we would be able to enforce that student conduct even though they're not here in the city. These kinds of things demand responsibility from our residents and end up being a good thing for the community. We also have students who live in the property who would become what we call CAs or community assistants. We would probably have four or five students help with monitoring, help with visual monitoring of, you know, if there are parties or if there are violations or if there's noise or all of the things, the long list of things that you can think of that become distractions to a peaceful living environment for students and/or the neighbors. I might say with a specific example that we opened a property at Eastern Michigan University this past fall, which is close to Eastern, like this site is, to Ohio University, that happened to be in a location of town which was the highest vandalism and really call district in the city. And when we met with not only the local police but also the campus police to find out how we can best set up a coordination of our policies, we were notified that our particular property was in the toughest area of town. And so we went through these policies that we've talked about now, and we initiated many of these things through coordination to set up something that we thought would be good for us and good for the community. We have now, I called last week because I wanted to find out, there have been virtually no calls and our property has been what we had hoped, which is a nice addition to the area. Because we're there 24 hours a day and seven days a week managing the property, the problems have been virtually eliminated. Those are the issues that I had today, and I'm free to listen to any questions or further questions that might come from the Planning Commission.
Okay. I probably just want to repeat for the record for some of the people that were not here last time. You're anticipating two, three, and four-bedroom units, as I recall?
Yes.
And there's a, I don't know if the mix is final in that, but you're looking at, basically in your suites, there would be one-bedroom, one-bath type arrangements?
That is correct.
And you're shooting for, I think it was 560 or 70? I can't remember how many.
Yes. We're in the 166 units. We're still tinkering with that mix. I think we're around 600 and some beds now, which is a little different than our last week. But they are two, three, and four-bedroom. Ryan was here to, I don't have it memorized yet, but I promise I will. But it is, yes, the essence of the design is one student per bedroom with their own private bath and with their own closet and then fully furnished.
Right. And as I recall, you have some drop-off areas in the main project area, but primarily relying upon a parking garage to, for those that do have cars, to be able to?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it a one-package deal that you buy it all? Or do you buy that and then you have to buy a parking space?
The idea is to have a package that you pay X amount of dollars per bedroom and then you would have some parking. The truth is, I haven't investigated the market conditions here, but we have not had à la carte costs or pricing in the past.
Oh, I understand.
And in the past. So I wouldn't say that that's what we're planning here.
I understand you're, we're just at the preliminary stages now, but I thought that some of the basic information, I think the public would want to know, would be numbers of bedrooms and people.
Oh, yes.
And parking accommodations and that it's fully furnished, which changes moving an awful lot. You don't have to do a whole.
Yes, it does.
I don't see any balconies, for example, in your thing. And I recall from the last presentation, you don't like balconies. You don't want to do those because they're sometimes problem generators.
Yes.
And I could attest to that. So I just wanted to make sure that for those that were here or were just listening today for the first time and just hearing about the project, that some of the basics got in there as to the quality of the project that you're shooting for.
Yes, thank you. And pardon me for missing those details, but we don't have any balconies planned. We have courtyard areas which will be mostly visual amenities, but have no, feel that there's no tremendous demand for balconies and that the potential for clutter and management and maintenance issues with respect to balconies ends to outweigh their usefulness. So couches and barbecues and things that don't, are not vital to the day-to-day part of the student living. Yes.
Right. I think one of the few concerns that I had that I expressed the last time we met was I'd love to be able to find if there, if you can keep searching for another way to direct the flow of traffic from the parking garage straighter to Stimson Avenue than having it come back to Mill Street and then back through the area, kind of like a big J or something that it would be making. Because we, Mill Street is congested enough, but overall, it looks like a very fine project. I would open it up to anyone in the audience that would have, or Steve, do you have any particular comment after your review? I think you did it last time, but I don't remember if you have anything in particular.
The only thing is, I mentioned that we had the plans at the staff meeting yesterday.
Right.
And staff has reviewed these preliminary plans already. I'm sure that those comments will be packaged up and sent to the developer before review, but we just finished that up today, the staff did. So they'll be available before, two weeks, the next meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. And I just might mention publicly that we have begun that process. Our civil engineer, Burden Bull, has met with your staff to begin the process and dialogue for utilities and some of those issues. Our G Technical Group, who has been involved with some of this site in the past, so has tremendous history on the site, but also groups that we've used, they're going to be down to begin soil, additional soil work in the next week or so. Ryan is involved here with the details of site planning and setbacks and those kinds of things. Our architect, Dean Wentz, we did pay a visit here before Thanksgiving and came around and did a little survey of some of the existing homes and architectural features of the town. We actually stopped by and looked at some, in the historic offices, to see what some of the architectural elements are from the past, and most of them remain, and to get a flavor so that we can hopefully design something that'll fit in with the context of your community. And Dean Wentz has begun that, as you can see from our illustrations here. So although this is certainly not final, we think it's a handsome step forward and hopefully something that people will be fond of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comment from anybody in the audience? Thank you for your presentation, your time.
Okay, I might just add if there's any.
We have to cut Ryan out if he wants to say anything.
Yeah, just what questions that we might be able to answer, we'll continue with the process. And we're certainly hoping to come back on the 15th and working with Steve and your folks. But if there's, we'll continue ahead unless there's anything we've missed.
Go ahead.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I could have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have you had experience before with, in fact, the kind of off-site, high-rise parking? In any of your other similar projects? You mentioned Ypsilanti probably is what you're talking about. But have you had experience with off-site, not-on-the-ground parking before?
Yeah, we have a, Ypsilanti has a.
Can you tell us about it just a little bit rather than just yes?
Certainly, certainly. In Ypsilanti, we have off-site parking, so where we have, the way we manage it is, in that particular case, we have stickers. We give them out, so many stickers per bedroom. And then as part of our courtesy managers and those kinds of things, we monitor the status of those parking facilities. And if there's a violation, we, depending upon each site, we decide whether we tow, whether we ticket, those kinds of things. And that seems to be very effective in terms of how you manage your site. Columbus, we have a multi-story parking structure that we've had in the downtown area, in a redevelopment area, much like this, that we've managed for years. In that particular case, we have a local parking management company that handles the day-to-day operations for us. So, you know, the details of how we'll manage our off-site facility here, I couldn't tell you today, but I feel confident that we'll be able to do it successfully as we have in the past.
Mayor, as a note, I think one of the issues that was brought forward by the commission at the last meeting was it can affect subleasing or subleasing of the parking spaces by non-occupants. That's your idea?
No, that's not allowed.
Not allowed?
We would not allow that. No, and that's the reason for the permit? Good question, is that, in fact, thank you, because I, part of this is, I go through so much, I can't remember the details to be able to publicize them. But we did start with hang tags, where you can hang on your mirrors. And we found that the hang tags could go from a resident's car, even though they have license plates that's registered with and a part of their lease, that they could be conveniently moved from one vehicle to another. And it became a bit of a hassle for us. So we then changed to a sticker, which is much more permanent and has eliminated that kind of a thing. So that in effect, the person that you intend to issue the permit to is the person that uses it. Thanks for asking.
Yes.
That also reminds me, same thing, management of the garage. How will the, how will the safety in the garage be managed?
Oh, absolutely. It's our.
They're going to mind the both of them.
Absolutely. It's our property and it's our responsibility. And I will say, as I've said many times before, it's in our best interest to manage our assets so that they, so that they're clean and safe, so the people will pay the kinds of rents that we want. And so there are responsibilities that come with that on both ways. One is, we want to have people that are using our facilities who we have under a lease agreement and vice versa. So we want to have people that can come in and park or whatever and feel that they're going to have the space that they had intended, it's there for their use, and that they can come safely to and from their living environment.
How large do you expect the safety control force, whatever it's called?
We just interrupted for a moment because our technicians have reminded me that they can't hear your question and being picked up for the mic out through the system or on the videotape for it, so.
Would you like to step up?
You may have to, either she can come on up or you can repeat a little bit enough of the question so people will know what you're talking about.
Pardon me?
Just repeat. I just asked how large the staff will be with the safety force, whatever you.
Well, what we, I haven't designed this, we haven't hired anybody yet, obviously, here. And some of our other projects are similar size. We've had two police officers that live on-site. We've had five community assistants that are, live on-site and are a part of our process. Then you always have, in addition, a property manager and an assistant property manager that generally live on-site. So you have part of your maintenance staff, those folks that handle the work orders, whether it be your air conditioner filter needs to be changed or my panic alarm is stuck and continues to go off, or things like I'm locked out of my unit after hours. They have, they're on call and we have a rotation of people that use cellular phone that are available. And so it would be a combination of those folks to manage the site.
Right, I think that's what this process will do, is we try to raise concerns or things we would like to see addressed by the time we get to a final plan.
Yes.
And I think, the concern is what's important and that they will develop some plan and either satisfy it or say why they can't.
Yes.
And that's what part of this process is, but it's good to know what the community is thinking about from the standpoint of the concerns they may have.
Yes, and as I, I'll mention, pardon me.
I wanted to recall one other thing was that, because one of the things that some people in the community always ask about is where is this in relationship to the 100-year floodplain? And I think it's part in and part out. Because I think that the Stimson Avenue area on down into Kurtz is in, I think, the 500-year, or is all the site out of the 100-year? I can't, it's very close, as I recall.
I think there's a little corner that stretches through here that would be the 100-year, which means the technical garage.
Yeah, no buildings are located in the 100-year flood area.
Okay.
Parking garage is.
All right.
But it'll have to locate or it will be, like, just.
Right.
We don't believe that we're filling.
I don't think you are either. It's just.
Yes.
Since it's that area of town that's near the floodplain, I just thought I'd bring it up to clarify for the public.
Yes, thank you.
Where we were. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
The second case we have for a presentation today is one that has been here before. Tom Dowdy with Campus Edge is case number 0509. And they have been working for some time now on this project and have wished to come back and re-present this to the Planning Commission. And Tom, whichever you or whichever one of you is going to start out. Commission and Tom, whichever you or whichever one of you is going to start out.
First, I, Mary Abel, the Planning Commission, I'd like for you, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come back, been here for several years. I hope everybody has had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday, everybody present of the administration. My name is Thomas Dowdy, I'm representing Milestone Developments out of Roanoke, Virginia. I'm here for a pre-application meeting to reintroduce the 896-bed Campus Edge Plan for development. This plan was approved in April of 2004 and was passed to the City Council and the City Council had asked us to go back, relook, revise and lower the count of beds that we are putting on our 21 acres. We've taken a look at it, we attempted to do 600 beds on it, but the engineering required a lot of retaining walls, made it unfeasible for anyone to do and still left us with some slipage prone soil. So we are back today reintroducing the 896-bed project. This project is a gated community. We do control the entrance of the, of everybody entering our project. Two, we are, we have all the bells, whistles, alarms and security, security cameras and everything else that goes with the security of the residents of Campus Edge. The plan itself from 2004 until today has had one change which, in my opinion, which whatever that's worth, has not been a real great change, which I would like to show you. We have taken, excuse me please, we have taken the clubhouse from the bottom, let's flip this over, of the property on Dairy Lane, which is located right here, and moved the clubhouse up to the top of the entrance road coming off of Richland Avenue. Other than that, that's the only change we have made. We have exchanged the clubhouse along with two apartment buildings. We're still maintaining the two, three, four-bedroom apartments that total, make a total of 896 beds. The, this plan has been fully engineered and it's my understanding, we are in compliance with all safety engineering, water runoff, pre and during construction periods of water retention, when in compliance with the density, hillside ordinance and all codes considered by the City of Athens. It is also my understanding that we are providing with you, or we have provided with you, all slope stability reports, foundation recommendations, bores for all buildings, retaining walls, water lines, roadways, we provide the environmentals, we have hydraulic studies, calculation of critical storms, calculations of culvert sizing, traffic impact studies, two that we are providing, one which we are getting, which is the latest one from the state of Ohio. We feel that we are meeting the comprehensive plan that the city has set forth and the fact that we are relieving a lot of the rentals in desired neighborhoods for the City of And we, all of this has been approved through Burgess and Nypones, the hydraulics, the studies, the reports, third-party reports, all of this has been approved through the City of Athens Engineering. We're also furnishing and have furnished to the City of Athens on the 18th of November, the site plan, complete site plan, utility plans, building layouts, grading plans and road layouts, landscaping plans, sewer, storm sewer and retention plans, pre-construction and water runoff plans. We have an agreement with the university to relocate the dirt on the backside, which we have to go back to the university to revisit that and it's my understanding to Mr. Kowalski that Mr. Burns has no problems with it and it's just a matter of, I think there's some problems that Mr. Kowalski's seen, we're waiting for him to schedule a meeting with Mr. Burns, which I do think we have on December the 8th. We did arrange this to stay off of public streets, there would be no dirt carrying onto the public streets of Athens, which we were asked to do. We have an agreement with the city, which we are having, we have asked the city to review and get back with us, but we expect very little changes on that. Part of that agreement with the city is the use of the funds for TIF. We are running a water line from Blackburn Tower over to our site onto Richland Avenue, of which we are contributing the first $250,000, the balance of which we are trading out with the water hookups and fees. We have contributed an additional $150,000 for off-site impact with a needs stoplight, which we've been asked to put our entranceway across from the courtyard and so therefore could require stoplights or security lights or traffic lights and any other reason that the city may have to use $150,000, there's no restrictions on that. We are in full agreement with supporting the city bus transit system and we have agreed to pay and buy a ticket for every bed that we have, not necessarily every bed that is rented, but we have offered to buy a pass for every, every bed that we have there in order to support the transit system. We have engineered our standards for lighting to meet the specifications that Mr. Joseph Shields has asked us to do back in 98, September 18th, I believe, was his letter. We have provided the city with the density schedule showing our density comparison with all the other projects in the City of Athens, that's part of the information we have provided. We have an agreement with, letter with Southside Neighborhood Association, where we have met with them last year and we had talked about their concerns and we have talked about what we wanted to do and we were asked, or rather the Planning Commission was asked to be sure that we kept our promises, so therefore we have written an agreement, which is part of the plan that we have entered into with the city to make sure that this agreement with the Southside Neighborhood is honored by ourselves and give the comfort level to the Southside Neighborhood Group. That agreement letter was written by Mr. Bill Walker and was presented to the Southside Neighborhood Association. We've also provided renderings and drawings of the buildings, the clubhouse, the clubhouse is, rather a large clubhouse, offering to our resident community things such as indoor swimming pools, fitness centers. We have basketball courts, volleyball courts, we have a cyber café in the clubhouse, we have activity halls to where if parties wanted to host a party from 60 to 80 people, we have two halls, one upstairs and one downstairs where they can sign up for the use of these halls. We have two halls that seat 40 people that we are doing as theaters to where we can show movies and stuff to give a little relief to some of the students and provide a different type of activity and opportunity for the students to come and participate with one another without necessarily having to make the walk downtown or to get themselves involved with alcohol or maybe relieve some of that. There's other activities that we're going to provide on-site for our residents. We have the archaeological history showing the excavations of Danes' mounds and we have asked that appropriate Native Americans come and work with us to build a monument in a section of our remaining 11 acres on the front side where we can recognize the Native American Indians that had once habitated there. All of these documents are available to the public, as I said, and were presented to Mr. Pearson and administration, members of the administration on November the 18th. We, this is just fast, I guess you would call it a application, preliminary application for that. We do have copies of this, we would be glad to share. This is a living document, this document's going to change as we go forward, but the changes are going to be things that I think will probably be very minor and positive changes. All the engineering, all the core bores, all the stability tests, all the foundation recommendations are all thick booklets that are upstairs in, in this building and so you have the ability to go and, and go over these for yourself. We are talking with Walla Construction Company, we have a great interest in having them to do the construction of our project here on Richland Avenue. Walla Construction Company does have some interest in, at it because they are, I guess, co-owners or part owners of the Carriage Hills Apartments. Two, we feel like by working with Walla Construction, we are working with a company that is considered local and will be using as much local labor as they can and certainly they're going to be subcontracting in the state of Ohio where we don't have to worry so much with the electrical contractors and such, they'll be using the ones that they normally use. This project is geared up for me to say that I would like to see this thing pushed through, I would dearly love to see it pushed through. I've been at this project since September of 98, I've been working through the committee process since March of 99. We at this time have chosen to go this, go forward ourselves as individuals, as milestones and not take on a joint venture or partner. We feel like that my sons now have put themselves in position to where they can do this. We, I do not want to push this thing forward to where I'm really stepping on anybody's toes or offending anybody, but I do feel like the time has come that we need to really move forward with this project and take it, exhaust it and, and by this time that we've been here, and let me, let me say this, this time that we've been here has been frustrating, has been extremely frustrating, but at the same time, it's provided us with the best project for this community that I think that you can, you can come up with. We have met everything that they've asked for. The landscaping was a huge part of it. I've been meeting with Southside Community about landscaping. We have been approved by the landscaping committee here in Athens and I have asked the Southside, let's take this, let's look at it, we'll add to it, we'll improve it, work with us to do this. We feel like that we want the citizens of Athens, when they look up on the hillside, to see something that is pleasant and see something that they want to see there. I don't think there's, not everybody is against the project, there's a lot of people that don't want to see that hillside taken away, but at the same time, I think it's inevitable that this hillside is going to be developed, it does meet the comprehensive plan and we've asked that the Southside Community join with us to, you know, pick and choose colors, lighting, help with the landscaping and let's carry this thing forward. And so, Mayor, since you're there, we put a load on your shoulders, I'm sure, but we're, we're quite excited about it. We feel like that we're at the point and we have furnished everything that, and this property has proven itself to be able to be engineered. Everybody's concerned about the slipage, it's proven itself, it can be engineered, it has a stamp of approval from three different engineers, from PSI to MAR to Burgess and Nypones to Everly out of Atlanta. We've got, you know, got a lot of degrees and a lot of certificates supporting the ability of this project and slip prone soil that we can manage. And so therefore today I ask that, that we receive any comments, I ask that the community get, get in, talk to us. You can email me at any time, anybody listening, at dowdythomas@aal.com with any questions, concerns, thoughts, I'd be glad to consider any of it because this is your community. We want to, we want to be a part of your community and so therefore I'd like to thank you for the time you've given me and over the years, I'm sure I'll see you again.
Any questions?
Could we make sure that either stand up with Tom and so that it gets out on the microphone or-
I, you may have addressed this in some other form and I just missed it, so I apologize if you've already answered this question, but you said that you, on council's suggestion, went and downsized the project, but that the smaller project had slip problems or had engineering problems? And my question is then, why, why do you come back with the larger one?
The small project was, the hillside was left an additional 30 feet higher and by having that dirt up there, it was slip prone dirt. By cutting it down 35, 30 feet, you're removing the slip-
Cutting the hillside down to a shorter height?
Right.
Okay.
And so therefore the, the soil is going to be removed and also that has come from, as a recommendation from Burgess and Nypones as well.
Hi, my name is David Breiser and I'm actually here representing Dairy Barn, which is located on Dairy Lane. I'm currently Vice President of the Board of Trustees. And back in May of 2003, we voiced a very strong objection to this project and we, I thought at that point had also received support in our objection from the Athens Trade Tree Commission as well as the Southside Neighbors. The concern is, there's multiple areas of concern. I know the city would love to have a water line, you know, the Dairy Barn would love to have a, a water line. I know OU would like to have a lot of off-site housing so that they can justify their programs to refurnish their, their housing units on campus, but I don't think that those are reasons to approve this project. I, I will have, as I said, the unanimous approval of our objection by the board happened now a year and a half ago, so this will come back before our board and it's conceivable that changes have occurred and we'll reconsider this, but at this time I don't think we can. I, I think for one, I drive by there on, you know, at least once or twice a week on the Dairy Lane exposure and for two years we've been living with a ragged, stripped, awful-looking hillside, just a residue of whoever had just sort of torn the trees and left the scrub and it hasn't improved. So right away I have some lack of belief in somebody telling me everything's going to be wonderful. Every time we get a big rain, I see city crews, I see university people down there dealing with mud that's coming down the service drive onto Dairy Lane. Now, if you're that interested in making us happy, why, why is this condition, you know, persisted? This may not be your fault, it may be somebody else's fault, but nevertheless, it certainly affects my opinion of, of this project. And I don't have all the bottom line, there's, there's just so many questions. We've been told, for instance, that one of the implications of this will be that there'll only be a right-hand turn on Richland Avenue off Dairy Lane, that there were some traffic considerations to avoid stack-up of cars who are trying to turn left to get to the highway. Some of these things could be devastating to the Dairy Barn if they're not resolved. It's hard enough to get into Dairy Lane as it is without, you know, without having to have 890 new people also trying to do it. There were issues about the water line involving the necessity of taking up the brick on Dairy Lane. We feel the brick on Dairy Lane is, is part of the Dairy Barn, it's part of our culture, it's part of Athens' history and as much as we want a water line, you know, we would need that to be addressed. And again, maybe these are just rumors that I've been told, but these are, these are persistent rumors. I guess the concern is about, you know, cutting off the top of a mountain, which I sort of think they made it legal in West Virginia, you know, and taking this fill and pushing it somewhere else. At the time that you introduced this originally, I know the university was interested in that fill, you know, we at the barn will, will also have discussions with the university to find out about the real efficacy of that. It was, it was sort of interesting because at the same time that was happening and we looked at the area in which this fill was going to be, to be deposited and it turned out to be the area in which for the first time in like 20 years, they had spotted a bobcat. You know, this is a little hollow behind Dairy Barn. So while directly your, your cut and fill wouldn't be on our property, our drainage patterns on the Dairy, at Dairy Barn because of the university's positioning of that fill- on the Dairy, at Dairy Barn, because of the university's positioning of that fill, will be on our property. Um, you know, we all hear a lot about, uh, you know, Native American things and, and all that, uh, but I can't, I mean, but when you said that you were gonna possibly demolish Native American sites and then put up a monument to Native Americans, to me, I have to say that sounds kind of audacious. Um, at any rate, you know, we're, this is, you know, just, this is my opinion, I guess I still do represent, you know, 600 members of the Dairy Barn, 10,000 visitors a year who are concerned that whatever happens there is something which will enhance the, uh, the region's experience of the Dairy Barn and not be a detraction or a liability.
Mr. Rosner, I thank you very much for, uh, the comments that you've made, and you're welcome to stay up here with me if you'd like, because that may be some of the, I'm going to miss. Uh, Dairy Lane, I, we have been very concerned with Dairy Lane, and I assure you that the university has been very concerned with Dairy Lane and the use of Dairy Lane. Uh, our entrance onto Dairy Lane is a gated community, and the gate will be, will remain closed, and, uh, only in case of emergency. The main exits are going to be out on the Richland Avenue exit, and it's going to be engineered to where it can handle the, uh, traffic patterns of, uh, what is needed and required by the 896 beds. Uh, the dirt, uh, going down on Dairy Lane, I was told about that, I think, uh, Mr. Pearson's office called me, oh gosh, had to be probably 18 months ago, and we went in and we cleaned out the drainage ditches along Dairy Lane, and that alleviated the problems as far as I know. Since then, I have not heard of anything. We've also stacked the road going up through there with the, with the, uh, uh, stone and gravel to kind of ensure that, but if there is a problem with that, we can come back and do the same thing, do what's necessary, uh, to alleviate the dirt and stuff going down on Dairy Lane. The brick, we've addressed the brick with the water line. Uh, if there's any brick, I mean, uh, the city has made it known, as well as the Dairy Barn has made it known, that they expect the brick to be put back as is and in the condition that it's in. As of today, we know of no brick that we are going to disturb, but indeed, if we do find there is some hidden brick or the possibility of it, we are very interested in keeping it as it is, and we're not here to offend anybody or take away from, uh, the Dairy Barn or the unique status of the Dairy Barn. It's, it's appreciated by myself, I assure you. Uh, the Native American Indian, that is the report I have here with Danes' mounds. Uh, it has been, uh, uh, excavated by, uh, I can't remember the professor's name here at, uh, at the, uh, Ohio University. Uh, it, it was, uh, cleaned out in 1964, I think you'll find, but that, that report is, is here in this office at the end of the hallway on the left. It's stored, I think that's where, it may be downstairs, I'm not sure where Steve has put it, but that is available to you to read. Uh, there's been, uh, two or three different groups of Native Indians to go up there and have their ceremonies at the site that they thought, uh, were the, uh, was burial grounds. We also, I've also spent several times, uh, hours with people here walking that, and they have been given the opportunity to go up there and excavate themselves, search, dig, be with us when we are up there, uh, with the BIKO, and, uh, monitor us. I mean, the opportunity's been given for these people to be, get very active with this. And as far as we know, and as far as the reports go since 1964, uh, any remains or any articles there have been removed from that site. Um, I would like to, you know, I would like to, uh, meet with yourself committees, listen to your concerns, address your concerns, and, uh, would like to see what we can do about, um, making everybody satisfied with what's going, what's going on here. As far as roadway, uh, the, uh, what happens with Dairy Lane, the traffic patterns on Dairy Lane, how it's going to be relieved. I think a lot of that response is going to be left up to, uh, the mayor and his ability to create his TIF and use the TIF money in our area. This, this money's going to be used in our area, and I know for a fact, one of the concerns that the administration has is with the Dairy Lane and the 682 areas. And, uh, the TIF money's going to go a long ways to address, you know, uh, the South Side Neighborhood and, and the problems of flooding and stuff along Richland. But, uh, that is, you know, I feel like is a huge advantage. Uh, I wish we had completed this pro- uh, project several years ago. I think a lot of those problems probably would have been answered and resolved, uh, with the TIF money we have, but that, you know, it hasn't been done, so, uh, here we are today, but I would, you know, at any time, uh, hopefully you copied down my email address. If you'll write me or email me, I'd be glad to meet with you and other associates to discuss this with you. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Yes.
I'm Delia Rapp. I'm the president of the South Side Neighborhood Association, and I realize that Tom's in a real positive mode here in trying to sell his project, but we've met with him, we don't have an agreement with him, and I want to make it plain that there's nothing that's positive about his project for the South Side Athens.
And Ms. Rapp and I have met on several times. We have been, uh, talking about responsibilities. We've been talking about the responsibilities of individuals. Uh, we have been talking about, uh, people, uh, living up to what they say. We've been talking about the ability of people coming in, addressing things, and walking away from promises. And, uh, we have asked individuals, uh, to write down their understanding of what our promises were. We have, uh, through Bill Walker, the local attorney, we've had him contact, uh, I think Ms. Graham, and possibly Ms. Rapp, I'm not saying she was, uh, contacted, I'm not. I know that after a couple of meetings that we had talked about it, and we had asked if they furnish us with their demands. We never did get to, get them to respond to us with their demands after, you know, walking away from the last meeting. And, uh, Mr. Walker, uh, had been expecting them to write down, as they said, that they would write down, uh, their concerns, and we would be, uh, willing to address them. After not receiving them for a period of time, we wrote down the way we understood the concerns were. We wrote down and put in writing and a document and sent it to, uh, Ms. Delia Rapp. And a copy of the document is here, it's furnished by, uh, Walker and Walker, Mr. Bill Walker, we had sent to them, and, uh, we'd asked for a response, uh, as Ms. Rapp had said, that, uh, maybe she doesn't feel like it's a contract, maybe she doesn't feel like it's an agreement. Uh, we certainly felt like we have carried it as far as we could carry it by putting our words, our comments, our feelings in a document. Uh, after you put it in the document, to me, it's an agreement that you can take, uh, if we don't live up to it. You have, uh, you have this in writing from us to you that this is what we're willing to do, and, uh, we have in the past asked for other documents or concerns to be added to it. And so we're going with what we've got, but I, Ms. Rapp, I'll promise you, we have got a meeting on December the 8th. Uh, we will discuss anything you would like to discuss on this. Uh, we'd be happy to add to this document. Uh, like I said earlier, this is a living document. We'd be glad to discuss what concerns you might have and anything that we can agree to.
At this point, you've got your plan, and you're not really willing to compromise. You've already tried to compromise with Athens City Council, but you have, you upped the plan once again.
We're, we're, we're final, kind of past what the Planning Commission's here for at this stage, and I think that's, uh, a discussion for another time.
That's it.
Thank you much, Tom. I'm fairly familiar with the project. That concludes the two cases that we had today. I do not have any communications or announcements of other business. Our next meeting is December 15th, and, uh, opportunity for citizens to speak on other things, or the administration to bring something to us. I see Steve Reddy. Please, we're still, still having our meeting. We're going to wrap up here in a few minutes.
My name's Steve Pearson, and I'm the zoning administrator for City of Athens, Ohio, and I would just like for the public to know that documents pertaining to each of these projects are available at the Office of the Service Safety Director. Um, at this point in time, Edwards Communities' plans are very basic, but they do meet the requirements of, um, all documents and information necessary for possible preliminary approval. Uh, notice of the possibility of preliminary approval, uh, has been published and should be in the paper today. It meets the 14-day, uh, notification requirement. Uh, in the case of Campus Edge, there's an extensive amount of information available, much more than would be required for preliminary approval, and that information is also at the Service Safety Director's, uh, office and available for the public, uh, to look at, make copies of. I would actually encourage people to come into, to look at the documents.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the commission on any items not covered on today's agenda? If not, then we will wait for a forum to do minutes, and, uh, we'll clear this adjourned.